Good evening. It is Monday, December 13th. This is the regular meeting of the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. Welcome. We are going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Ballas, Tracy. I failed to ask you if we can add an item for an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Yes, absolutely. So may I request a motion from one of my colleagues to add an executive session to the end of our meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. All right. Thank you. I, once again, want to thank the public who is here joining us for complying with our mask mandate. We will also be, as you can see, wearing masks during this meeting, although when one of us is speaking, we may take it off to make it easier for the viewing public, both in the room and being livestreamed or in our livestream audience or television audience to hear us. Folks who come up to the podium who wish to address the board may choose to do that as well. The next item on our agenda is action on the minutes of November 8th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second? Okay. Are there any questions or corrections on these minutes, Monday, November 8th?
Just under 12.5, reason on to learn board of directors. The third sentence, and he discussed the ASBC scores from Madison. Did they mean the SBAQ scores?
I believe they made, I had the same correction. I believe that is SBAQ.
Okay. I figure this much. SBACs.
Yep. Any other corrections to the November 8th meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second and one correction, all in favor of approving these amended minutes.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Next, approval of the meeting minutes from Monday, November 22nd. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections on these minutes? I will note that there were a couple of us not able to attend that meeting, so those of us who are not in attendance will need to abstain from approving these minutes. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving these minutes. Say aye. All right. Moira Rader, Kristen Peck, John Delventura, Chrissy Faulkner, Andrew Skretta, and Jennifer Baldwin were at that meeting.
Arnold.
Arnold? What did I just say? So it's Andrew. There's a correction.
There's a correction.
I read it and wasn't thinking clearly. Okay, so we have six in favor, and then abstentions. I'm going to abstain.
No.
Noel abstains.
I'm abstaining. I wouldn't do it.
And Dr. Hirsch abstains. Thank you, just for the minutes. All right. We are at the point in the meeting where we can invite public forum on topics on the board agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on topics on the board agenda this evening? I'm going to ask you to give your name and address. Thank you for the record.
Yes, Bill Misono, Jefferson Drive. First of all, congratulations to all of you, or condolences, whichever you prefer. I've read through the book. It's quite tedious. Took me like seven Red Bulls to get through it. I just wanted clarification on the public comments. Are we allowed to just ask the questions but with no answers? Is that correct?
So this portion of the meeting is a portion for public forum on topics of the board agenda.
Okay, then I may be mistaken because it's part of the meeting. I just wanted a clarification before I did speak on whether that's appropriate.
Right, so, yeah, so I think I can answer that question and clarify both pieces. So this is, again, public forum on topics on the agenda. Sorry, easier to understand this way. If, in the process of a public comment, someone has a question that's easily answered, we can do that. And then there is a public questions at the end of the agenda. And then again, if someone has a question that can be easily answered that doesn't lead to discussion, we can try to do that. The reason that we need to not get involved in discussion on topics not on the agenda, which means we may not be answering in detail questions at the end of the meeting on topics not on the agenda, is that by statute, boards of education are expected to provide an agenda for what will be discussed at the meeting to the public ahead of the meeting in order that the public knows what we're going to be talking about and can participate if they wish. So when folks come to our meetings and bring up something at the end of the meeting that's not on the agenda, we are actually not able to engage in any substantive conversation but are happy to take that back, respond to a question that comes up at a later time, or put it on a future agenda because it's clear that it's a topic that the public is interested in. Does that help? Does that answer?
No, you answered it well. And the only reason I asked is because I did have a yes or no question once, which was easy, but it wasn't on the agenda. And it wasn't answered, which is fine, but I was followed by a woman who asked a question about bus schedules and COVID, which was not on the agenda either, and it got quite a lengthy explanation.
Okay.
That caused my confusion.
Okay. I may not always do things perfectly, but this is, thank you, this is the intent, that we always want to be very careful not to engage in discussion around items not on the agenda because it's not fair to the rest of the public, and that's in fact why we're statutorily obligated to do that.
I totally understand. You explained that thoroughly. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to approach the board with topics on the board agenda? All right, thank you. We will now go to review and approval expenditures for the month of November. Dr. Hirsch, I believe you were the approver.
Yes. This was discussed in our earlier meeting tonight in the operations committee. We have before us the summary of the expenditures, and I'll just point out a couple of things. The expenditures for November were $4,960,628.75. That's representing 37.13% of our budget compared to 38.43% in 2021 and 35.67 in 2019-20. So we're between those, and this is a normal levels of expenditures over time. Revenue for November 21 was $18,648, which includes $17,550 for magnet school transportation grant and $1,098 for preschool tuition. This is a reimbursement from the state, which comes to us twice a year. For the next four or five items, salaries, benefits, purchase services, we're all within 1% of our normal expenditure, which makes that a normal distribution. And our tuition costs for special needs students is 5% lower than projected. That's good news, but that can be changed in a matter of just one student. One last thing on that. The transportation budget is up over last year, and the reason for that is that last year, we did not have an in-person summer school, so that our costs this year have gone back to normal. Any questions on that particular part of the summary? With regard to the warrants, just a few notes. On page five, we see $275,000 expenditures, and that's for the transfer of dollars from our general fund to the dining services, which had been running in deficit. And this was something that we had been apprised of prior last meeting. On page seven, you see an expenditure for $10,876 for a physical and therapy trainer. We subcontract physical therapy and training for our athletic teams rather than hiring a full-time person. That's what that cost is. Page eight, something under school outfitters. You'll see two lines there for picnic tables, which looks a little strange, but that's picnic tables that we have purchased to put under the tents at the Leeds and Jones School this past year. And finally, on page 13, we show an $835,000 expenditure to the town of Guilford. That's the monthly payment we pay for medical payments as our share to the city.
All right. Dr. Hirsch, is that essentially a motion for the approval of expenditures?
Yes, for such a motion, yes.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second? Excellent. We did just have an operations committee meeting prior to this meeting where we discussed this financial report and the warrants more extensively and had an opportunity to ask questions. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? None. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the financial reports for November 2021.
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, that is everyone. Thank you so much. We are now at part of the agenda, reporting on any communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications to report on received since our last meeting? All right.
I do, Katie.
Go ahead.
I have received a communication about an incident at GHS that I believe was handled appropriately by Ms. Chaff, and the person who wrote it to me wanted to just make me aware of that.
Wonderful. Okay, terrific. Thank you to our wonderful administration. I did get a couple of follow-up communications asking, we had a commenter at our last meeting noting social studies and science curriculum offerings at Baldwin. We did have a couple of communication following up, and what I can share very briefly is that Mr. Hamel is always watching the schedule and the approach to course offerings at Baldwin Middle School, where they've arrived at for science and social studies has balanced much longer class period times with the quarterly approach to providing these two subjects. But we in Guilford Public Schools and each of our principals is always looking at how well that's working. So that will be a continued approach that our administration takes, is looking always for the best approach.
Dr. Ballas, Tracy, I do think it's really important to clarify that at no time was science or social studies instruction reduced to half of what it was.
Oh, absolutely.
So there was a reconstruction of the schedule. There was some increase in math instructional time and some minor decreases in the other areas, but essentially, we are offering it in larger chunks rather than in smaller pieces every day. And so there is some interruption to the delivery, but it's not half of what it ever was. We did not reduce science instruction dramatically.
And Mr. Hamel did report to the board in a very helpful communication.
Yes.
That that approach has actually been experienced as an improvement in quality and effectiveness in instruction in those subjects. It's really allowed classes to dive in more in depth than they are in shorter periods. So.
And one other noteworthy item, I don't know, Dr. Freeman, if you want to touch on something that Mr. Hamel wrote to us, was that since fifth grade in most schools is still considered elementary, that Baldwin kind of sits in a different position being a fifth and a sixth grade school, so that science is actually taught more in our specific fifth grade than it is in other districts?
That is correct. Depending on where, depending on what reference group you're using as comparison, yes, that's essentially correct in most cases. Yep.
So I do want to thank Mr. Hamel for so quickly responding to that parents' concern and really allowing board members to be completely up to date on that approach. That was very helpful. Student representatives, wonderful to have you here. Welcome. Turning it over to you.
Hey, everyone. So Sean isn't here today, so Ruby and I will be covering. First, at Guilford High School, the Diary of Anne Frank play was recently, and they sold out for two separate shows and was a really big success. Also, the fall sports have ended, and all seasons, all teams did very well, and now we're on to the winter season, so good luck to all the teams. And lastly, the two winter concerts, or four winter concerts, were on December 3rd and 4th, featuring the Guilford Symphony Orchestra, as well as Concert Choir and Voices, and that was a big success as well. At Baldwin Middle School, the school community did an outstanding job for collecting food for local families and pantries. The effort was taken on by the Soccer Club of Guilford, U-13 Boys Soccer Team, and the Baldwin Middle School PTO. The school community is now involved in a holiday collection drive for toys, books, and other things to benefit local charities, and this drive is sponsored by the PTO. Both the Thanksgiving drive and the holiday drive are great ways to allow students to give back to the community. At Baldwin, students also participated in an Hour of Code Computer Science Initiative, which was run by Mrs. Ritchie. Instead of taking the usual one hour out of the week, 40 minutes per day were dedicated to allow students to explore computer science. Teachers facilitated computer simulations, programming, and coding activities. And students were also able to participate in a webinar with Mary Ann Breeze, who works for a local data security company. In addition, students were also able to talk with Guilford Public School graduate, Demi Chen, who works for Disney Animation. At Melissa Jones, parent-teacher conferences were held in November, which allowed families to learn more about their child as a learner. Melissa Jones also had some really fun spirit days planned for December, and so far, students and staff have enjoyed Flannel Friday and Holiday Best Days. And finally, the PTO offered outdoor enrichment opportunities, which included music, yoga, and running club. At Calvin Leet, in library, fourth grade classes were challenged to build a structure that could hold the weight of as many books as possible using only 12 sheets of paper. The record was set last week in Friday, in Friday's class, which held 67 books, well beyond the expectation. And after being asked to reflect on the structure's integrity from the lesson and make improvements, students were also able to create a structure that held over 90 books, which was a very exciting and impressive moment for the students. And lastly, the PTO coordinated after-school enrichment classes for students, including focuses in STEM, cooking, process art, yoga, and painting.
At Adams Middle School, winter sports are back, such as basketball and wrestling. The peer helpers are holding a Toys for Tots and a Purchases for Pets drives. Students are collecting items in the main hallway, and it will end this Friday, December 17th. Two years ago, Adams collected 400 toys and pet supplies, and they are hoping to do the exact same this year. Seventh graders got to experience an author visit by Shannon Draper, who is a five-time winner of the Coretta Scott King Book Award and has over 30 published titles. It was virtual visit, but they still got to ask her questions and listen to her speak to them. Concerts are back, and finally here at Adams, and all this week. Eighth-grade band and orchestra students will perform tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the gym. The seventh-grade band and orchestra students will perform on Wednesday at 7:00 PM, also in the gym. And then on Friday, December 17th, the chorus students will perform a virtual concert, which will be recorded for everybody to see. At W Cox, parent-teacher conferences were held virtually, and the turnout was great. Students and staff participated in various activities surrounding gratitude, and at the end of the month, the school came together outside underneath the shed and to sing a song, quote unquote, gratitude. December will be a month surrounded by happiness and joy, where students will partake in activities, learning about how happiness is shown in our community, in their home, and at school. Various activities regarding happiness and joy are scheduled throughout the month of December. At Guilford Lakes, all grades are continuing to improve in math, where from kindergarten, students are continuing to dig deep into numbers and getting into doubling and even numbers, where to fourth grade, students are continuing to build on multiplication and division.
Excellent.
Thank you both very much.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody have any questions or follow-up for our student reps?
I would just thank you for the reminder about the Adams concert on Friday.
Kristen's taking notes. Excellent. Well, thank you so much for being here, and as I say always, feel free to stay, but it is completely understandable that you probably have things to do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And have a great holiday season, whatever your families celebrate. Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
I just want to add, I was fortunate to attend the Diary of Anne Frank and then the music performance, and it was just so nice to be back in the auditorium, seeing the kids perform, and you could just tell they enjoyed it as much as the audience did, and even the teachers up there with them. So it was just so nice to see.
Excellent. All right, Dr. Freeman, we are up to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Ballas, Tracy. An update on the budget build. We are moving apace. We are on time. Last year, this time, I was reporting to you that we were running a little bit slow in preparing the budget. This year, at this time, we have met with all of the building principals. We've met with all the department heads. We are meeting as a central and business office now and pulling that final document together. On December 1st, the board held a public hearing to hear from the community. We had a wonderful turnout here in this room, and appreciate everybody who came out to make suggestions around the budget. Earlier tonight, in the operations meeting, the board met with Joe Spurgeon, who is our insurance consultant with Lindbergh Ripple, and we did talk about the medical insurance, which is a significant portion of that budget as we're pulling it together. Again, we're on pace to have the budget books prepared and ready for delivery to you and to the public in early January. We do have, I believe, one more meeting coming up before the holiday break, and that will be the Board of Education meeting with the Board of Finance for our first fairly informal conversation. As you all are aware, I present the draft that we, the administration, presents to you. You, as the Board of Education, finalize as your budget, which you then present to the Board of Finance, and I've always appreciated the opportunity to meet with the Board of Finance early, just as we meet with the community early in that process. That's the budget update.
Any questions? No? All right. One of the things that we can start to do as we dive into this, more deeply dive into the budget season, our administration has been in it for a while, is start, you know, as questions come up, feel free to write them down, feel free to pass them to me. We can start to collect them because we'll want to make sure that everybody's questions get answered as they come in, and then continue to do that through the whole process.
Absolutely right. And obviously, we'll take those, those begin to come sort of much more quickly once you've actually seen the budget book and the budget proposal, but if you have early questions, we're happy to start collecting and responding to those as well. We compile them all together just so we can respond to all nine of you at once for anybody's questions.
Right. Excellent.
And then around the COVID update, I do need to share that we had a busy weekend, this weekend. We processed, I want to say, six positive cases over the course of this weekend. That's nearly what we processed in all of last week. Like much of Connecticut and like much of the country, we are beginning to see an uptick in positive cases. The good news is that at Adams and the high school, when we see a positive case and we conduct contact tracing, that may result in only one or two students who are quarantined and end up missing school because we have very high vaccine rates at the high school and at Adams. And so most students are not being impacted by quarantine, even when we see those numbers come in, those positive cases come in. At the younger grades, no students in the younger grades have reached the timeframe in which they're considered fully vaccinated, although that will be occurring soon. Additionally, I want to speak a little bit about the screen and stay option that I know that the governor has discussed. I know approximately 80% of the school districts in the state are participating in the screen and stay option, and Guilford is one of those districts. Screen and stay applies to non-vaccinated students who may be offered the possibility of continuing to attend class while they are under a full quarantine. There are very strict circumstances under which screen and stay is offered. It is only offered to students who have only been identified as a close contact to another student in a supervised, controlled, and fully masked classroom setting. So that's really narrowly carved, and it only applies to the regular classroom, sort of the academic classroom setting. Students who may be considered close contacts in music classrooms, in PE classrooms, or in unmasked lunchroom settings would not qualify for the screen and stay exception. Any student who's a close contact to any positive individual outside of school does not qualify for the close contact, for the screen and stay exception. And I want to be really, really clear. If students are identified to screen and stay, they are still under full quarantine. They are only excused to attend class in school. They should not be going to birthday parties or athletic events. They would not be cleared to participate in any school extracurriculars. You're quarantined, you just have an exception to come to school. So first, I want to remind the community that it's a really narrowly carved exception to begin with. Second, I really want to note that even the opportunities that we offer for that narrow exception here in the Guilford schools are going to be limited. They may be limited by our ability to process contact tracing. So we were contact tracing last night at 9:00 on a Sunday evening. Contact tracing involves pulling the class roster, pulling the seating charts, pulling the attendance lists, identifying who was present, where they were in the classroom when present, then identifying those vaccinated versus unvaccinated in the classroom, and adding screen and stay then involves now identifying if there were any ancillary exposures outside of the classroom as well as the initial classroom exposure. The people who are conducting that contact tracing are our nurse director, our nurses, our school principals, and then central office administrative staff. And when we are processing six, you know, multiple cases at one time, we don't have the capacity to get down to that level of granularity in each of those cases. The first and most important pass is whether or not students shouldn't come to school because they may have been exposed. And so the quarantine may go out immediately, and then notification that your student may qualify for screen and stay may lag that initial quarantine by a day or more in some cases, based on our ability to process the cases that are coming through. And then finally, it may further be complicated by staffing at the school level. So we are continuing to experience a labor shortage in the Guilford Public Schools like most of the country. For us, it is specifically impacting our ability to fill positions for substitutes, long-term substitutes, lunch recess and hall monitors. Those are the positions that are most impacted. When students do return under the screen and stay umbrella, they may attend regular classes, but they don't necessarily participate in all of the other activities. They wouldn't go to a music class, they might not participate fully in PE, so that could generate additional staffing needs at the building. On Friday, we sent out a notice that we are participating in screen and stay and worked to try to identify all of those limitations, but then over the weekend, we began notifying people that there were quarantines rolling out. We started to receive a lot of communication from parents asking if their child was going to be screened and allowed to stay, or was it under a full quarantine? So I sent out a follow-up communication today. I think what's most important is that if your child qualifies for the screen and stay option, you will be proactively contacted. Just as last year, when we started saying that we had a case in one building, we would get 50 or 100 communications from people wanting to know if their child was a close contact. So last year, we worked really hard to say, if your child is a close contact, we will reach out and proactively inform you. The version of that this year is that if your child qualifies for a screen and stay exception, we will reach out and inform you as soon as possible. Calling in actually slows the process down because now those nurses and those principals and those clerical positions are trying to move the work forward and respond to everybody who's asking that question. So I want to clarify the communication that went out Friday and remind everybody that's a really narrowly tailored exception that may not be able to be offered in all cases. a really narrowly tailored exception that may not be able to be offered in all cases, and we will let you know when it can be offered. The final qualification to that is that screen and stay is probably not a reasonable response while we are seeing case numbers go up dramatically. Remember, screen and stay allows a non-vaccinated student who was a close contact to a positive case to continue coming into the school. So the most important decision for us will be if we think it is responsible to offer screen and stay in any of those cases. So first, we look at whether it's responsible considering the overall climate, and right now with the increasing rates in Guilford, we will likely not be offering. Second, we need to know that we have the staff available to supervise it should we offer it. Third, it won't necessarily be offered immediately, it may lag the quarantine notification. And then finally, students who are fully vaccinated skip over all of that. A fully vaccinated student is simply excused from the need to quarantine. They not only get to attend school immediately, they're one of the first cuts we make as we go through this process. They can also continue to attend extracurriculars, athletic events. So again, I want to remind everybody, the best way to keep our children safe, I believe, is to get them vaccinated. The best way to reduce spread in our schools is to increase the number of students vaccinated. But the bottom line is, the best way to ensure that your child's instruction isn't interrupted by a need to quarantine is to have that child vaccinated. So I again encourage everybody to talk to your pediatrician and to strongly consider having your children vaccinated. Additionally, the booster shot is now available to 16- and 17-year-olds, and I would encourage every parent of a 16- or 17-year-old to talk with your local health provider and seriously consider having your child receive the booster shot. Again, I think it's the best way to protect your child, it's the best way to reduce spread in our schools, and it is the best way to keep your child's instruction uninterrupted. So, not great news on the COVID front. We're going to continue to keep an eye on this. There are important conversations happening at the state and local level around this topic, and we'll keep working on it. And I do, I want to extend my sincere, sincere thanks to those school nurses, our nurse supervisor, our principals, and to our central office administrative staff who are processing these cases as quickly as we possibly can, evenings, weekends, and most recently over the Thanksgiving holiday. Our staff is continuing to move this as quickly as we possibly can.
And you and I, Dr. Freeman, spoke about this briefly last night, but we're going to also have to just monitor the staff's ability to continue at that rate, or whether we need to, how we need to support them moving forward.
We need to find ways to support the people who are doing this lift because this comes on top of running their schools, right, every day in a labor shortage where principals aren't just doing contact tracing after school, they're covering classes and being teachers during school because of the labor shortage. We do need to find a way to relieve some of this stress. In the beginning of the year, when numbers were low, it was much more manageable, but as the numbers begin to rise, we do need to address that concern. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Freeman, is there anything that we as parents or as a community can do to help?
Yes. If you have a bachelor's degree, you should go to GuilfordPublicSchools.org, and you should sign up to be a daily sub. Being a daily sub allows you to choose which days you come in. You put your name on our website, you get automated invitations to join us, you just pick the ones that you are available to do. Mr. Bowden would love to meet you and interview you. We need daily subs to join the ranks so that we have people supporting our teachers, right? Our teachers are covering extra classes, our principals are covering classes. We also still have openings for permanent subs, which sounds like an oxymoron, but we know we have needs for subs every day. So every building has a number of daily, regular substitutes who come in every day. We need lunch monitors, we need recess aids, and we really, really need daily subs.
So, can you kind of, if people are in the community thinking about maybe doing that and are really nervous because they don't know what that role would entail, like are they, what would the expectation be of somebody who has a bachelor's degree, is willing to be a daily sub, puts themselves on that list? What would the teachers be, or what would the principals be expecting from that person?
So the first thing is that you can tailor your working conditions. So if you think that you would be comfortable in the elementary level, but not so much with middle or high school students, you can just select to work at our four elementary schools. If you would prefer not to work in the school that your child attends, you can choose just the other three elementary schools and not the one that your child goes to. A daily sub is responsible for coming in, checking in with the main office, picking up the lesson plans that have been left behind by the classroom teacher. You do not design the lesson, and then following those lesson plans. A substitute may not divert from the lesson plans. You don't get to come in and do whatever you think would be valuable or fun with the students. But you do follow the lesson plans that have been left for you. You are generally going to be supported by other grade-level teachers that are regular teachers who will check in on you at that grade level. And as you begin to become a regular, you begin to know the pattern of the building, you start to get to know the students in the building. You are responsible for keeping our students safe and happy and moving forward in their studies by following. You need to be good with kids, right? If you enjoy young people's company, if you've got some patience and you know that you can make it through a day and continue to smile, we'd love to have you on the roster.
And there's compensation.
Absolutely. Daily substitutes.
Everybody needs a pay prior to...
No, I heard there was compensation. What does it pay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dailies are $100 a day.
It's $100 a day, and you choose the days that you want to work. You can say no to the whole raft of invites, you can say yes to the Tuesday, Thursday, because on Monday and Wednesday, you have personal things scheduled. Please, contact Mr. Bowden's office. He will be happy to meet with you individually and go into greater detail. There's a substitute handbook that we'll provide for you, and there is an interview process as well. Not only is there compensation, there's screening that goes on. You do need to be fingerprinted, there will be a background check. We do have expectations for the folks who come in and work with our students. And again, you're keeping them safe, you're keeping them happy, and you're moving them forward that day in their studies, following the work that the teacher has left for you to follow. We should record that and start putting it out regularly.
That's right.
I have a question goes to contact tracing.
Yes.
I know you can't ask for it, but if parents choose to maybe send the copy of their child's vaccination card to the school nurse, is that something that would help the district to minimize the phone calls you have to make and you can quickly figure out who has to be contacted or not?
We started that early in the year, and a little bit of the trouble there is that it continues to be a moving target. We have found that it's simply easier for us to log into the state database, and our nurses can pull up that information in real time. And so while we appreciate that, and while we asked for that early in the year at Adams and at the high school, now with the youngest kids and everybody being on a different schedule and the two-week past the second dose falling differently, we're finding that the fastest way for us to do that is to check the state database, and our nurses are able to do that in real time.
Great. Thank you.
It's a good question. Thank you.
Dr. Freeman, how are our teachers doing? With all this said, you know, we talked a lot about student quarantining and students, you know, testing. Are we, are teachers, you know, absent because of quarantining? And more importantly, you know, how are they doing overall?
I appreciate the question. So I talked a little bit about clerical staff and school nurses and principals. Teachers are tired right now. I think a lot of us thought that we would be done with this when June got here, and we thought that this year was going to be different. And in some ways, in those early weeks, it felt like it was. And now, with numbers of cases continuing to creep up, continuing to have students who are being quarantined, when students are quarantined, teachers continue to offer instruction to those students virtually, which means now many teachers are juggling some students in person in front of them as well as some of the students at home. For those of you who use Zoom regularly, you know it works really well when everybody's on Zoom, and then it works really well when everybody's in person, but when you've got 10 people in a space and 10 others in a Zoom meeting, that's one of the most challenging environments to put together, and so they're still struggling with that. We have students who, in many cases, were out of school or had limited school for a year and a half. And so we've got some students who have lost some opportunities for socialization, and some of the behaviors that would normally, students might have matured out of by certain grade levels, we're addressing some of those behaviors that are challenging teachers. Everybody is continuing to experience this in their personal life, and when we begin that contact tracing on weekends, it's not unusual that we're calling into a home, and we're asking a teacher at home on the weekend to help with that. We've got teachers who have their own families, their own children, who are experiencing all of this in their school district, whether that's Guilford or away. You know, it feels like we were told we were going to run a half marathon, and we got to 13.1, and then somebody said, guess what, it's actually a full marathon, you need to keep going. And I think if we had known that from the get-go, we might have been ready for it. But I appreciate the question, and I appreciate every parent out there who takes a minute to say thank you to your classroom teacher. And it's wearing on everybody, but that person who spends all day with your kids and smiles behind the mask all day, every day, a thank you goes a long, long way. I appreciate the question. We are beginning to look at some of our plans for the back half of the year around some of the, some of the continual adult learning and some of the professional development and some of the expectations that we had built into this year, thinking that this year was going to be a full rebound year, and adjusting some of those expectations and turning some push for growth into support as we continue to get through a challenging time because we count on the people in the classroom every day. So thank you for the question.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Freeman?
Dr. Freeman, do you think we're going to do any additional clinics for the younger kids?
So actually, I had this in my notes and I missed it, but I'm going to thank you for that question too. We were planning on running a Saturday Academy, which is going to be modeled off of the Summer Academy that Dr. Crystal shared with you. Right now, we have posted for the positions associated with that, and we are having trouble generating interest in coming in to work in those positions. The labor shortage and the teacher shortage is hitting the whole state, and so while we were pretty easily able to fill the positions over the summer with teachers who were interested in picking up that additional time, and while I think in a normal year, we would have more interest than we could, than we could fit for teachers who wanted to pick that up, I think to the point, Mr. Delaventura, teachers are tired and people are worn down, and the idea of picking up a Saturday teaching responsibility, even with compensation, is a lot less attractive than it might normally be. People need their time to recoup on the weekends. So, we have plans for that, and right now, we're not sure if we will be able to staff it and offer it.
Other questions or... All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. We are up to the board agenda, nine, specifically 9.1, to act on a personnel item. May I have a motion to ratify the appointment of the following teacher? Megan Pambino, 1.0 full-time equivalent at Cox Leet, special education teacher.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Terrific. 9.2 is to act on the completion of the Melissa Jones Roof Project. So, Mr. Gurnum, our Director of Facilities, has asked to bring this to the board tonight and to request that the Board of Education officially close out the Melissa Jones Roof Project. This is done because this was a state-funded project, and we are required to close it out. So I'm going to ask for... Go ahead.
State reimbursed.
Sorry.
We receive a portion of those costs in reimbursement.
That's an important...
The state did not pay for it in its entirety.
That is an important...
Although that would have been great.
It's an important piece of information. So I'm going to ask for a motion to officially close out the Melissa Jones Roof Project.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. I've got everyone? Okay. Terrific. All right. Last month, at the Board of Ed meeting, Dr. Freeman brought forward the 2021-2022 district priorities and initiatives. We have them listed here in front of us and are being asked to act on these initiatives tonight. The three priorities are as follows. Our schools will be physically and emotionally safe, healthy, equitable, and caring places for learning for students and adults, built upon supportive relationships and positive decision-making. Teaching and learning will be supported by instructionally-focused leadership, subject area coaches and specialists, professional learning communities, and diverse instructional resources. And all students will engage in academically rigorous tasks in every class. Instruction will be aligned to content area standards, integrated with the principles of learning, and measured by the ongoing collection of evidence of learning. And the 2021-2022, I believe that's a typo on the sheet. 2021-2022 initiatives to support these priorities are as follows. Maintain health and hygiene protocols and practices to provide a safe and healthy environment for all students and members of the school community. Support an accelerated approach to instruction that promotes deep learning for all students. And further develop a culture and instructional practices that foster social and emotional wellness, equity, and social justice in our school community. So, is there a motion to accept these as the district priorities and initiatives for the academic 2021-22 year? So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right. All in favor of the motion in the second?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Terrific.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. We are now being asked to act on, also brought to us at the last meeting as a receive item, the 2022-2023 school calendar drafts. So we were presented last month and are asked to vote on this month, one of the two drafts. We have draft number one and draft number two. The main difference between these two drafts that otherwise share vacation days, professional development days, et cetera, is that draft number one would have the first day of school on Thursday, September 1st, which would occur prior to Labor Day in 2022, and would have the last day of school, which does depend on both calendars, on snow days as June 13th, 2023. Draft number two, in contrast, would have the first day of school on September 6th, which is the Tuesday following Labor Day, and would end the school year again, dependent on snow days, on June 15th, 2023. So I am going to first open it up for discussion of these two drafts. I believe, as I referred to my notes last month, Dr. Freeman, you noted there was a preference at least among some of the leadership team for draft number two. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all?
The leadership team would recommend draft number two. And the only note I would make is that while this year, it appears that we will not be able to use remote learning days in response to inclement weather, there's a significant move to ask the legislature to address that. And it appears that the only reason that we can't do it this year is because of an oversight, that it didn't get picked up during the session. So it is likely next year that we will have that opportunity back, and so that last day of school and that two-day move could be moved if we have the opportunity to draw it. Now, remote learning days wouldn't work in every eventuality, but it could work significantly so that you don't push beyond that last week, out of that week into the next, even with the last day scheduled to be a Thursday.
Right.
So graduation doesn't become this moving target?
It might make life a lot more predictable for staff, graduation, and families who plan vacations, family and staff who plan vacations, right? If you look at the whole calendar, we're asking everybody to hold all the way through pretty much the 28th or 29th and not make any plans because you never know what winter's going to hold. So it could make things a lot more predictable for a lot of people.
So I just want to open up to discussion. Does anybody have thoughts on a prior-to-Labor Day start or a post-Labor Day start?
I believe in the last couple of years, we've moved to the post-Labor Day start, correct?
When it falls this early, we certainly have, yes.
Yes, I know in last... Yes, I know in the last two or three years, we've done that, okay. And like you said, and how does that align, not that it really matters too much with other, but how are we aligning with other towns and other districts?
The meat of the schedule, which would be the professional development days, particularly the March Professional Development Day, and then the vacations that fall both in April and December, they align with the regional template. The first day of school always has swing in it because districts have a different number of those professional development days. I think you'd probably see a fair split, but again, with it falling so early this year, you're going to see a number of school districts starting on the sixth. That won't be an unusual calendar this year.
And I noticed that you noticed June nineteenth is Juneteenth, so that is now a federal holiday. So, that will be recognized regardless of, you know, if we get pushed out because of snow.
It is noted there that if the weather does push us out, we do not plan on scheduling for that Monday. We would plan a makeup day, you know, on Friday the sixteenth and on Tuesday the twentieth, but we would avoid June nineteenth as a makeup day if necessary. But again, it could be moot depending on what action is taken around snow days.
And also to reiterate, we are talking about a difference of five days on the start, but only two days on the back end.
Yep.
Right, right, because of the Labor Day holiday and the, right.
Dr. Freeman, does when we start have any influence over fall sports? Like, are coaches allowed to run, like preseason, whenever they choose to start it? Or does it have something to do with when the first day of school begins?
No, so there is, there are CIAC guidelines that may be different individually for different sports, but there are very clear guidelines around individual practice, students coming together and participating in what might be identified as captains' practices and when coaches may be able to make contact. And no, the first day of school doesn't impact that. CIAC sets that for the fall season.
Okay, so they would actually pick a particular, they'll say August twenty-first is when you can start getting together. It won't be two weeks before the first day of school.
Yeah, we don't put any of our teams at an advantage or disadvantage based on when we decide to start school.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think the best approach here is to entertain a motion from someone for one of the drafts and then allow the board to vote on that motion. If it carries, that's the draft that the board will have voted on. And if it doesn't carry, then we will have to create another motion.
Motion, go ahead.
Go ahead. I motion to accept draft number two.
Second. Any conversation, further conversation about that motion? Okay, all in favor of accepting draft number two, please raise your hand. Looks like we have a unanimous vote for draft number two.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And all of your other calendar items align to both calendar drafts? So, it won't affect any following decisions that you make.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, nine point five is to act on the Board of Ed Meeting Calendar Draft. So, again, this was a receive item, as will be the next item, which is the committee meeting schedule. So, we will first be voting on the regular meeting schedule. These are our full board meetings, which tend, are generally scheduled for the second Monday of the month, although we'll note on this calendar two exceptions, an additional meeting at the end of January for the public forum and a holiday. And identifies the workshop meetings as generally the fourth Monday of the month, although we do not meet for workshops over the summer or in the month of December.
Important to note that while the board is required to identify these meetings going out, the board has the ability to cancel a meeting, add additional special meetings, which is usually what you do, or change the date of a meeting with appropriate notice to the community.
So, is there a motion to approve this Board of Ed Meeting Calendar, noting that we can add meetings or change as necessary?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. I'm thinking, we changed Valentine's Day?
I meant before we voted, in all seriousness.
Come on, you spent it with the board. We've spent a lot of time together.
I'm thinking of my children, but that's the other.
We can change it later.
I was just going to say, let's think as, let's think as we move.
It requires appropriate notification and that's all.
Okay, great.
All right.
It's much easier to get a reservation the next day.
There we go. That's right, we'll get everyone's leftovers on the fifteenth. Okay, we're going to now request it to act on two thousand twenty-two Board of Ed Operations Committee, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, and Policy Committee Meeting Calendar Drafts. Again, this notes the operation committee meetings, which occur prior to our regular board meeting every month and the Policy Committee and Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committees, which alternate prior to the workshop meetings. Is there a motion to approve this calendar? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent, that's everyone, thank you. Okay, I am now going to ask Mrs. Peck to start us at least in a conversation on a number of recommendations that the Policy Committee is bringing to us as receive items only. Again, the process is here is that we will receive these items tonight, have an opportunity to ask questions, but will also have the intervening time until our next regular meeting to reach out to Mrs. Peck, Mr. Bowden, or anyone on the Policy Committee with follow-up questions.
Okay, so, we are bringing forward today, for everybody's review, a handful of policies recommended from the state in keeping with executive orders from Governor Lamont, specifically regarding COVID regulations. So, some of these may wind up being moot, they may change before we even vote on them, although it's not necessarily looking as likely as perhaps it was at the policy meeting. So, I think this is something everybody can read through, it has to do with staffing, it has to do with face coverings. Jason, what else would you like to add regarding the policies themselves?
By nature of how the board's policy manual is set up, you'll see there are five items that are on this agenda for us to review. There essentially is two. There are redundancies built in based on the intended audience of the policy. So, you'll see, just to point out that face masks and coverings, there's a new policy related to students. And then subsequently, our certified staff and then our uncertified or non-certified staff. The difference in the new policy related to vaccinations, which follows the governor's executive order, only pertains to our personnel, not students. So, you'll see that those are redundant as well, just split by job status or job type or classification.
The mask policy basically requires continued masking in school for everyone, for students, for certified personnel and for non-certified personnel. Additionally, the mask requirement is in place for any contractors or vendors who would be working in the building during times in which students are in the building. So, a roofer working on the roof would not have to be masked, but a vendor working inside the building with students would be required to be masked as well. This is tied to the executive powers and the state mandate.
All right, so, again, we have three new policies, five-nine-one-zero, four-one-one-seven, and four-two-one-seven, face masks and coverings, as Mr. Bowden explained. One for students, one for personnel certified, and one for personnel non-certified. And then two new policies, four-one-two-one and four-two-two-one, required COVID-19 vaccinations, one for personnel certified and one for personnel non-certified.
And these bring us into compliance with the state mandate. We are not asking for anything additionally to what is being required of all school employees at the state level.
Okay, terrific. Does anybody have any questions at this moment for Mrs. Peck, Mr. Bowden, or the Policy Committee? All right, so I encourage all my colleagues to read through these carefully. Mrs. Peck, is it reasonable to offer you as someone we can turn to if we have questions before next meeting?
Sure, that sounds great.
Excellent. And then we will, these will likely be on our agenda to accept or act on at the next meeting.
Exactly right, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up to number ten on the agenda, reports of committees. The Policy Committee, you may not have anything else to add after that. Mrs. Peck, is there anything else that the Policy Committee wants to report on?
No, that I think will cover it. We've got a few other topics on our agenda, but nothing ready for the full board's review yet. So, we'll continue discussing it in our January meeting and.
And we don't need to get until February.
Okay, all righty. Operations Committee, we did just meet, but Mr. Delaventura, do you have anything to add?
We did, just a couple takeaways from the meeting that we touched upon. Lindbergh and Riffle did give us a report on medical claims. And, you know, I think what all of us took away is, you know, just the impact they potentially could have on the upcoming budget. We received a very healthy report from the dining services as we continued to see increased usage. And lastly, got a facilities update, the highlight of that being wrapping up a limited punch list on our new turf.
Absolutely, which I had a chance, I think after our last meeting, to walk over to. It is beautiful and wonderful and.
Really exciting.
Really very exciting, terrific. The Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee is due to meet on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. I don't know if anyone from that committee has anything to add at this moment.
I can share that we anticipate that we will be receiving the report from Dr. Seiler at that meeting in January.
Wonderful, on the curriculum audit.
Both the curriculum self-audit as well as the student interviews that he conducted. And so, we're looking forward to being able to share that and his insights with the community.
Terrific, that's wonderful. So, that meeting again is January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. That is six PM here in the Guilford High School Library. That is not a meeting that has public forum, but any of these meetings are open to the public.
That's exactly right.
So, that's an important thing to mention. Liaisons to town committees, does anyone have anything to report to this body from any town committee they sit on?
No update from land acquisition?
No. Any others? All right, and liaison to Learn Board of Directors, Mrs. Peck, is there anything to note or mention?
Sure, let's see. So, Learn is a regional education facility. They manage some of our magnet schools and it's a group of schools that run, it's a group of districts, all the way from Guilford up to Stonington. So, that group has, each of those districts has a representative who sits on the board. And what the, what the leader of the Learn Association, Kate Erickson, was talking about this week was really staffing shortages. So, they're struggling to find staffing for subs. They're extremely worried about mental health of their current employees and their students. So, that's their main focus at the moment. We also heard from the superintendent of the Lime Old Lime District. He is similarly worried about declining enrollment. He's actually approaching tuition-based students to try to see if he can incentivize them to come back into his district. And he is hiring a marketing director for outreach to try to incentivize other folks to perhaps join the Lime Old Lime District. Dr. Erickson is also working to approach the state legislators for funding. They get very little funding, particularly in the pre-K area. So, they're trying to increase the funding that they can get for magnet schools. So, it was a little bit bleak. They're struggling quite a bit with mental health and with personnel, but really still providing a fabulous service to the general community and to smaller districts that might not have mental health support and might not have technological support. So, they really act as a very helpful board and a very helpful organization for many of those smaller districts. And that's it.
Thank you, and I want to take an opportunity, I haven't done this in a while, to thank you, Kristen, for being the Board of Ed member who is committed to going to these meetings every month. I think two or three years ago, we tried to rotate through board members.
She's stuck now.
To get, that's right, she's stuck now, to get to this meeting. Well, but it really provides, it provides a consistency and really allows us. I feel like I get more information than I have in a long time, so I really appreciate you doing that. Okay, we are now up to the portion of our meeting to entertain public questions. These do not have to be related to the board agenda. We generally ask people to limit to four minutes. This is especially effective if we have lots of people who want to speak. Mr. Mitchell, should I also be paying attention to you at any point if anyone is on? No.
No.
Okay, so, is there anyone here who would like to address the board? If so, please feel free to come up to the podium, provide your name and address for the minutes. Anyone? Oh, okay.
Hi, everyone, my first time here, so sorry if I don't follow the rules.
Can we have, if you may, name and address for the record?
Thank you, see, I already broke the rules.
No problem, no problem at all.
Ellie Katz, sixty-seven Guile Road.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm speaking today as a father of a five and a three-year-old, who's a concerned parent. I'd like to take everyone, just take a moment to think, how many under-ten children you think of died in the pandemic in Connecticut? Well, the answer is one. If you go to the Connecticut website, it's one. And I think it's four from under, from ten to nineteen. You know, our kids have been wearing masks for two years at this point, for something that does not harm them. I'm concerned about a childhood mental illness and anxiety epidemic in this country, as we've heard in this meeting. I know some children that have developed severe anxiety following the adoption of the mask use. My kindergarten, my kindergartner, sorry, has a, can't hear his teacher and students, and he's constantly reminded, you know, not to touch other children. Schools shouldn't look so different from the community at playdates, Halloween parties. You know, the vast majority are not wearing masks at this point. Dr. Freeman, in August, I think you said you were looking forward to seeing smiling faces very soon. Well, it's five months later now. And, you know, I would really appreciate it that when the Connecticut mask mandate ends, Guilford would seriously consider following and dropping the mask mandate. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
It's okay to take it off?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Deborah Demucis and I live at eighteen Sugarloaf Road in Guilford. Originally, I was coming up here to discuss the history and the science of Baldwin. I didn't get to that meeting, I had a prior commitment and found out very late about that public forum. But it concerned me when I heard that we didn't have a full year of history and science in fifth and sixth grade. I do understand that may have happened when we took on Spanish and maybe due to scheduling. I do understand there are a lot of, a lot of aspects that go into scheduling, various curriculums and days and, you know, I worked at the high school for twenty-one years. I just wanted to say that I feel it's vitally important to have a full year of history and science at that level. And if there's any way, we might be able to find out what other schools in the state are doing to continue that. I do understand you're teaching it more than a quarter of a year, because I just heard that earlier. But that does concern me. I think that the core subjects are, you know, we're lacking in the world in science, our students. And, you know, our students aren't doing that well, even when they graduate college, with knowing much about our history. So, it really does concern me and I wanted to speak to that. And also, I also, I don't expect an answer to this, but there are people and there are, you know, children, students, who did get COVID and they have natural immunity. And I think it's important for the state and for the schools to also acknowledge if someone didn't get vaccinated, that they might have some natural immunity. And maybe if they can have a test to find out what that level of immunity is and then maybe, you know, they can use that rather than having to have this self-screening or, you know, I'm not really sure about what you're talking about. And I also do feel it's detrimental to our students to be wearing masks. I know our governor has emergency powers and, you know, seems to be mandating this as long as possible. But it really disturbed me when my thirteen-month-old So I'm glad I got to acknowledge what you've said, and I think it's important for us to think about all these issues.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Oh, okay.
You even brought Mrs. Demucis' glasses. I'm gonna keep them. First, Mr. Freeman, thank you very much for replying to my email. The part we agree on, I'm absolutely ecstatic about, and I really do appreciate your attention to it. And when I say something, I mean it. So when I say you have 100% of my support, I mean that sincerely. Of course, there are going to be things we disagree about, which is okay. We'll work through those. So anyway, oh, God. So much better. All right. One of the interesting things is, I don't know if you feel it, but, you know, with the talk of COVID and everything, I kind of think, feel things are getting better myself. I feel more at ease than I have in a while, like things are settling down a little bit. And maybe it's just us all coming to terms with everything that's happened over the past couple of years, kind of getting used to it and adapting. And with that, what usually happens as well is things that may have happened a couple of years ago will be reevaluated, and they'll be scrutinized a little bit more. And this is another discussion I had with Dr. Freeman, and I do respect his opinion very much, but we do have a certain disagreement in one area. A lot of the stuff is based on Candy's work. I know that CRT is not part of the curriculum. I'm not saying it is. But he's facing a lot of scrutiny now, and I have a lot of recent information, very recent, so within the past couple of months. I hope you don't blush, Dr. Freeman, but you're mentioned on a couple of these articles that I have. The first one, you're not. It's about Candy. It was actually Henry Rogers. I didn't know that. That's his name. Henry Rogers. So he's being scrutinized quite a bit and doesn't seem to be holding up very well. I don't know if you've seen him recently, but the questions are getting more difficult, and he seems to have more difficulty answering them. Something I've been looking at for quite a while. He stated recently, when he sees racial disparities, he sees racism, and that's to the exclusion of any other explanation. He just has one. And I find that hard to explain, frankly. There's explanations for everything. If you look at something, there's multiple reasons why people fail or don't accomplish as much as others, but that's his answer. When he was asked to define the word racism, this is his definition. "A collection of racist policies that lead to racial inequity and that are substantiated by racist ideas." I've never heard a definition quite like that before. He's using the word racism to describe racism, three different times in the same sentence. "The life of racism cannot be separated from the life of capitalism. In order to be truly anti-racist, you also have to be anti-capitalist." That's direct quotes from Candy. "Nothing I'm saying to any of you tonight is from me." These are all direct quotes, straight from his mouth. I find that highly disturbing as well. If you're going to dismantle capitalism, what do you want to replace it with? He doesn't say. He charges $20,000 an hour for virtual presentations. That sounds like capitalism to me. He wrote an anti-racist baby book, which to me just sounds idiotic. I don't believe babies are racist. He accepts millions of dollars from tech and pharmaceutical companies. He believes in defunding the police. He's an open advocate of race-based discrimination, arguing that the only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. Even worse, he has proposed a federal Department of Anti-Racism, unaccountable to voters or legislators. With that, they have the power to suppress racist ideas, to nullify or abolish any law at any level. There's one word for that. That's called totalitarian areas. Candy finds himself on the defensive recently when he's questioned about these things. He had claimed that critical race theory was foundational to his work. This is from the Manhattan Institute. This is Guilford. This is What Are They Learning? It's a national site, it's not local. "The title is 'Social Justice Inequity Pushed on Children in Small Town Guilford.' Cultural responsive teaching and social justice inequity are code words used by the current Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education." That would be you guys, this is a few months ago. And the superintendent. Therefore, our children are responsible, this is a quote, I believe it's you, Dr. Freeman, "Therefore, children are responsible for their own participation in our local, national, and global communities as they emerge into adulthood." Now, when you look at all these things, you may have, I'll have to investigate it more, but specifically, you may be violating the Equal Rights Act and the Civil Rights Act of 1964. "The superintendent of Guilford Public Schools," this is also from What Are They Learning? "The title of superintendent's goal is to educate Guilford on its whiteness." I don't know, Dr. Freeman. I can't comment on that. I don't know what that means, to be honest. "The superintendent of Guilford Public Schools, Paul Freeman, has found a convenient loophole. Even though he can escape scrutiny by claiming CRT is not in our current curriculum, he boasts that our school policy allows our teachers to use their own choices of supplemental resources." And to ensure that, his goal of the last three years to educate Guilford on its whiteness is achieved, he goes into the purchase of the books, which I don't want to reiterate again. We all know about that.
Mr. Mazanu, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I'm just, I'm going to ask if you have a comment or a question for the board, please?
I do.
You've reached the end of your time limit.
Yeah, this would be the comment. This is the final statement. "When pressed on the topic, Dr. Freeman's statement was, 'Our teachers will most likely be assigning this book to our students for required reading.'" And here's the problem with it. And this is a question for the board. I do believe that the teachers are inserting this. There's not a class called CRT, but there's definitely an infiltration of these ideas into the curriculum. In fact, I have an example for you. It's a group project that was assigned in social studies class on the Reconquista, which is simply the Spanish reconquest of the Iberian Peninsula. The Muslims occupied it, and the Spanish were just basically reclaiming territory that had been occupied by the Muslims. The part where it gets a little bit disturbing is in this sentence where it said, "The Reconquista lasts for centuries and ended in 1492. This year may seem very familiar, because this is the year that Columbus set sail from Spain," indicating that the battle was won by Christians. "In fact, this may relate to why Columbus had treated the Native Americans so poorly." I can't find any historical basis for that. "All the Christians were used to having to cleanse all other religions."
Mr. Mazanu, if you have a question about something that has been taught in your child's classroom?
I didn't say where it was taught.
Okay. Well, the avenue would be to reach out to the teacher. You know, we are not going to be able to determine a particular lesson at this time. So again, I'm going to ask you if you have a comment or question to pose it now, and then I'll give another member of the public a chance to speak.
No, Miss Spelstra, I don't. I really don't have a question on it. I just want the board to understand. And I'm not pointing blame. I do not want a teacher, like, reprimanded. I don't want any students. That's not the point. The point is that this is an example for you. I just want you to think about it. You know, I don't think any of you would agree that it's popular or appropriate to say that Christians were used to having to cleanse of their religions. So I just use it as an example and something to think about. I know you think everything here is great. There are 3,000 parents who tell me otherwise. I made a promise that I would listen to them and speak to them. And I think you'd be really upset if you knew how many parents just came to me and said, "You know what I tell my son and daughter? I tell them to put their head down, do what they're told in class, and do what the teacher says so you get a good grade." Because I don't want to make waves, and I think that's sad. The kids aren't happy. I want them to be happy. I want them to read beautiful things. I don't want poetry that's upsetting, like Elizabeth Assaveto.
Okay. Mr. Mazanu, you have taken well past your four minutes, so again, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay. I'll wrap it up. But a little beauty, a little happiness, a little kindness, not all this downer stuff, I think would go a long way. So please, as a board, consider what I'm saying. I'd be happy to speak with any of you and share this information. It's all factual. I haven't written any of it, I haven't made anything up. And, you know, as a board, you look out for our children. We trust you with them every day. And I really would appreciate if you would consider perhaps meeting with some people who had a different point of view, not really to dismantle anything, but perhaps to come to some sort of middle ground where everybody can come to this school and feel, like you say, you're looking for, and I do believe you, you want everyone to feel accepted.
Okay.
And so do I. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? All right. I am seeing no other people interested in coming up. So this is, we are coming to the end of our regular meeting. We do have an executive session as part of the meeting tonight, added per Board of Ed vote. So I am going to, in a moment, ask for a motion to allow us to enter executive session. In session, we will vote on that. We will hold the executive session. When we come out of executive session, we will then end the public meeting without a further vote or discussion. So I am going to ask for an emotion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you to the public, both on TV and livestream and in person, for joining us this evening. Happy holidays to all of you, whatever you celebrate.
Are we going to go to the back?
Yeah, we'll go to the back.